I'd like to call to order the April Commissioner meeting. I'd like you to join us as Commissioner Langley does the invocation and Commissioner Booth would do our pledge. If you will, please stand with him.
Let us pray. Turn of God our Father, we are grateful and thankful for this very moment in time and, God, we just ask for your love, grace, and peace to be in this meeting, God, that we may make wise and prudent decisions for your people and do the things that are pleasing in thy sight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask also, anyone have a cellphone on here in the building? Please either turn it off or please put it on silence if you would please. I'd like to ask now, does any commissioner have a conflict of interest of anything that's on disclosure statement tonight? Hearing done. Need a motion to approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Hudson? All of those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? You get that, Katie? I need a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All of those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Mr. Buck? Good afternoon, Chair. Commissioners, how is everyone this afternoon? Good to see each and every one of you. The public hearing on the agenda this afternoon is for a proposed text amendment for the plat requirements for a special subdivision, for an amendment to our subdivision ordinance. As you're aware, a special subdivision currently has plats two to three lots, and the review of those subdivisions is done administratively. It does not go before Planning Board or come back before this board, so it's done by the administrative staff. Environmental Health has run into a few issues where special subdivision plats have been approved by the planning folks, where it does not go before the Planning Board, but the administrative folks, and recorded with the Register of Ds, but the lots have ended up not meeting the requirements of the Health Department. Okay? So what this text amendment will do is put language on the plat that basically states that the subdivision has gone before the Health Department for their review, they've signed off on it and agreed to it, or that the plat is not for development at this time. So the caveat reads, and what this would be doing is adding Section 3.03.3 under signature blocks, required certificates on the final plat for a special subdivision include signature blocks for the surveyor, the subdivision administrator, and the review officer. The subdivision administrator shall verify that improvement permits for septic systems have been issued by Environmental Health for every lot in the special subdivision that is for development. Each lot that is not for development must be labeled "not for development" on the final plat. Okay? So what this text amendment would allow it to do is put that signature block on plats to that effect. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have, basically amending the text of the subdivision ordinance to include this language. Any questions? Comments?
We talked about this last month, and now we're going to do it, and that's a good thing.
Certainly. And this item did go before the Planning Board at their March 12, 2019, meeting with full recommendation to this board.
Going to ask for anybody to the public hearing would like to speak on this? No one signed up. I need a motion to come out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, we're down to items for presentation. Ms. Burnham?
Hi, good evening. I am Jessica Burnham, and I now represent the Beaufort High Partnership for Children. Many of you are familiar with Lisa Woolard. She has since retired. And in addition to myself, I'm here with Melody Corpio, as well as Lori Leggett, and we are here to present two proclamations for you to sign this evening. The first being the Child Abuse Prevention Month. We would like for April to be recognized as Child Abuse Prevention here in Beaufort County. And that proclamation, I think, is in your packet as well. And that proclamation states, whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most valuable assets, whereas all children deserve to have safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster for their healthy growth and development, whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life to our community, whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and concrete resources that need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure all children grow to their full potential, whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faiths, communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, other elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the community in Beaufort County. As we all know, this is a big issue for our community, and we would like to invite all of you to come out on Monday, April the 8th, at DSS at 10:00 a.m. to plant a pinwheel in support of Prevent Child Abuse and Neglect Month. The second proclamation is for the Week of the Young Child. This is an annual event for the partnership. We've actually put this on downtown in Washington. There will be a parade and full of activities for children. Children will actually have a parade route. We invite all of you to come out to support our children and our childcare providers during this time. I actually have invitation here that I'd like to pass out to you. And if Lori doesn't mind passing that out. This kind of gives a structure of the day, as well as on Thursday, April the 11th. If you're not able to come out, we ask that you wear blue and support a child abuse and prevention, as well as a Week of the Young Child. So she's going to pass those out to you for you to participate. And then if you'd like to volunteer, you're more than welcome to volunteer to contact our office. We have plenty of availability. But the second proclamation is to recognize the Week of the Young Child because children are vital for our community, and they are our next generation. So that proclamation states, whereas the Beaufort High Partnership for Children and other local organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, which is going to be April 7 through 14 of 2019, and whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs that can provide a foundation of learning for children in Beaufort County, N.C., and whereas childcare providers, teachers, parents, and others who make a difference in the lives of young children in Beaufort County, N.C. deserves thanks and recognition. And whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are critical to young families' futures, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Beaufort County, N.C., do hereby proclaim April 7 through the 14th as the Week of the Young Child in Beaufort County, N.C., and encourage all citizens to work to make good investments in early childhood. Again, we definitely would like to invite you guys to come out for that event. It's a lot of fun, children do enjoy. And hey, Kona Ice is going to be there, so you'll get a free IC. So I do want to thank you all for your time, and we appreciate this opportunity, and we ask that you make this official and accept both proclamations.
So moved.
Second.
All of those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you so much.
I believe we have Ms. Dingell here to talk about the 2020 census.
I'm Priscilla Dingell, North Carolina Partnership Specialist for the Department of Commerce, U.S. Census Bureau. And I'm here just to give you some information on the census. Just to put out a disclaimer, I was a university professor for 12 years, so I promise I won't give you a lecture. It won't be a lengthy lecture, okay? I'm also a Ph.D. candidate. I promise I won't give you a lengthy information, okay? So I'm just going to go over some pertinent information with you. First of all, how many of you are familiar with the census? Okay, good, 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 great. So it's that time again, it's that time again for the 2020 census. And I'm just going to give you some information on what we're doing, how we're preparing for the census, and hopefully at the end of this information, everybody will be involved and everybody will want to participate. For those of you that are familiar with the census, of course, you know the 2020 is coming up, so it's time for that next census. It's done every 10 years is when we do the census, and it's very important that we do the census. It's not something that North Carolina chose to do. It's mandated by the U.S. Constitution, so we have to do the 2020 census, and we have to do it every 10 years. It's very important that we do it because it has something to do with basically two words, power and money. So coming in Beaufort County, I already realized, okay, Beaufort County probably can use some more money in this county, at least I will hope so. I will hope everybody, that's on everybody's agenda. And that's basically what the census, basically, is all about. It's about power and money. $675 billion in federal money comes in the United States based on the census. Now, when I say it's about power and money, it's not money that's just given out, it's just freely given out. The census has to be taken. Everyone has to be counted in every county, every city, everybody has to be counted. And it's very important that everyone is counted, everyone is reached with the census because this is how counties get their monies. This is how hospitals and schools and buildings and the roads, this is how we get our money based on the information that is given or that is taken by the census. So that's why it's very important. So therefore, not only are the politicians and the government officials, they're not the only one that has to participate or want to push this, we need everybody in the community to collaborate. We need all businesses, we need all organizations, we need the school system, we need the government officials, the county, the city officials, everybody need to participate because that's how the county, how we can get more money. And this is something that's been done since 1790, so this is nothing new, this is nothing that was just done a couple of years ago. It's been many years since the census was established, but it's an ongoing thing that is done every 10 years. So this is that time. So what we're doing at the Census Bureau, the Department of Commerce, we're going to every county, I represent 11 counties throughout North Carolina, and what we're doing, we're going to each county to give out the information, to basically engage everyone and to motivate you hopefully to want to participate. We all want to see funding come into our counties. We all want to see funding come into our communities. We all want to see where, anytime you see buildings go up and anytime you see playgrounds done in communities, that's done based on census information, believe it or not, it's done based on information that was done by the census. So we want to make sure that everybody in every county is counted, everybody in every city is counted, everyone need to be counted as far as the census is concerned. And I'm just going to give you some information just to show you the importance of it. I can't stress that even the more the importance of participating and getting everybody involved. As I said, it's done every 10 years, and it's in the Constitution. If you look up the Constitution today, you'll see where the census is in there. It's in the Constitution, so it's a mandate that is done. $675 billion in the U.S., that's a lot of money to be distributed throughout counties and throughout cities in North Carolina or throughout the United States. That's a lot of money to be distributed. So we want to make sure we get our fair share, and I'm sure Beaufort County wants to make sure that you get your fair share as well. So we want to make sure that is done, but it's only done if this census information is in. It's only done based on how many, the populations that are counted. Everybody need to be counted, everybody need to be counted, and I'll go with that further. But I just want to show you how it can benefit certain areas. It can help with planning urban land use, planning outreach strategies, designing facilities for people with disabilities, the elderly, children, planning future government services. This is just a few things, how it can benefit. Scientific research, intelligent maps for the government and businesses. As I mentioned, it can help businesses and schools. We need to have, children need to be counted, everybody need to be counted, adults need to be counted. So it can help in all of those different areas. So that's why it's very important. Now, I want to let you know, as far as North Carolina is concerned, North Carolina bring in like millions and millions of dollars based on the information that is received, based on North Carolina participating in the census. And if everyone is not counted, those that are not counted in North Carolina, those that are not, when I say North Carolina, that's the whole state, that's Beaufort County, that's all the counties that's in North Carolina, but those people that are not counted, we will lose $1,623. That's a lot of money to lose. When you add that up, say for instance, you had hundreds of thousands of people that were not counted, you do the multiplication, that's a lot of money that the state will lose, that's a lot of money that the county would lose. So that's per person that does not participate in the census. So that's why it's very important that it is done. Now, what I did before I left, what I like to do, normally I do a presentation, and thank you, Katie, so much, she asked if I was doing a presentation or a PowerPoint, and I didn't do my PowerPoint today because my file was accidentally deleted, so I'll take care of that later. So I just wanted to make sure I give you the information this way. But what I did, I looked at Beaufort County because I like to see what are the rates that each county has as far as participation in the census. And when I looked at Beaufort County, and I'm going to have this information for you at the end of the presentation, I'll give it to you. I don't like to give it out in the beginning because if you're like me, I flip through information while I'm listening to the presenter. So remember, I'm a college professor, so I probably get that from there. But I want to show you just how much this county participated in the 2000 census, and this is what we call the response rate. And the response rate is basically what it says, the response that is given on the census. Based on the response rate for Beaufort County, your county, this county, the governor is asking that we get over 80%, at least about 82%. That's the response we want to get, that's the kind of participation we want to get. We get over 80%, we're in there like swimwear. We're doing very, very well if we get over 80%. Based on the information I gathered for Beaufort County in the 2000 census, you all were at 63%. 63% in 2000. In 2010, you came up a lot. You did an excellent job. Or we'll say a great job, maybe not excellent, but a great job. But you went from 63% to 78%. Now remember, we're trying to get 80% or more. So you did a great job. You can give yourselves a hand on that, you did a great job. And that's the response rate. So that's the amount of, when I say 78%, 78% of the constituents here in this county participated in the census, that's 2010. And now that we're going for the 2020 census, you did very well, you did very well from 2010, you did a great job. But we want to go up just a little bit higher, and we want to go up a little bit higher and let's get to that 80% range. We're almost there, just a little bit we need to do, but we're going to get there. We can get there if everybody participates. Everyone has to participate. So you did very well. Some of the areas, as far as the participation and making sure we reach all of the areas, making sure we reach, and again, I'm going to give you this information before I leave, but making sure that we reach all of the areas. What they have is called a hard-to-count area. We call it HTC, that's the abbreviations we use at the Department of Commerce, and those hard-to-count areas are basically what it says. Those are areas that in the community where the population is hard to count. One of the hard-to-count areas are the homeless. We have to make sure that in this county, I don't know if you have that problem here, but in this county, thank you, in this county, we need to make sure they are counted. Why? Because they are U.S. citizens. They are people. Yeah, they are people. So they need to be counted. So we noticed, based on the 2010 census information, we noticed that we missed a lot of these people.
Excuse me. If you walk away from the mic, the people who watch it on television, they're not going to hear what you're saying.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know I was on television, but thank you. Thank you so much. Maybe you probably should have told me that.
I should have.
Okay? But thank you. But that information, we realized in the 2010 census that there were, a lot of that population were missed, they were not counted. So that's one area we have to work on, not just here in Beaufort County, but all of the counties and throughout the state of North Carolina. We need to make sure we reach that population. We need to make sure that every homeless person is counted. How can we do that? We have our soup kitchens, we have our food pantries, and I'm not sure what you may have here, if you have a shelter here, what have you, that's how we can reach that population. So we have to make sure that they are reached. They are people, they have to be counted. Another HTC, a hard-to-count population, we have the veterans. I'm not sure if you have that problem here. I live in Onslow County, military town, Camp Lejeune, that's how Jacksonville is known, Camp Lejeune, okay? Veterans, veterans are throughout the United States, they have to be counted. That's a hard-to-count population, so we have to reach that population. Another population is the zero-to-five-year-olds, the zero-to-five-year-old children, that population, they have to be counted. Now, this is a very important population, and I mean, not that the other ones are not because they all are, but this is a very important population because we lost through the 2010 census, there are over 1 million children between the ages of zero to five that were not counted. This is very important because this is where our school system comes in, this is where the daycares come in, this is where all of the organizations that deal with children, this is where they come in. We've got to reach that population. And some people, this is where we had a lot of confusion as far as those children that are counted. Someone wanted to know, well, what if the child lived with the grandmother and sometimes stayed with the parents, or what if the child lived with the father and sometimes stayed with the mother if they're divorced or what have you? But to answer that question, wherever that child is on April 1st, which is on 2020, April 1st, is today April 1st also? Okay, a year from today, exactly a year from today. But wherever that child is located on April 1st, if that child is with the father on April 1st, the father will count that child on the census. If that child is with grandmother, the grandmother will count that child on the census, okay? So we've had a lot of confusion in that area as far as where the child is counted, where the child is counted. It depends on where the child is at that time. That is where that child is counted. Okay? Then we have the questions about the college students. Okay? Some of you may be parents that have college students. If that college student is in college at that time on April 1st, they are counted in that dorm, they are counted wherever, whatever college they attend, that's where they are counted at that time. So mom, you cannot count them, dad, you cannot count them at home, wherever they are located in college, that's where they're counted. And trust me, we do have, we will reach that population in all of the colleges to make sure all of those young people are counted. So we definitely will reach that. But those were some of the pertinent questions that we had as far as counting children of that age group and the zero-to-five age group, which is a very large, we missed a lot, and we want to make sure that we have that age group this go around. We want to make sure that we count all of those kids. So those are some very important points I just wanted to go through, and the hard-to-count, with the hard-to-count areas, also the information that I'm going to give out to you concerning Beaufort County, what did I do with this? As a part of that information, now, when we talk about the hard-to-count areas, we cannot leave out the immigrants. They have to be counted, okay? In all of the different counties, we do have Hispanics, Latinos, we have, you know, all different nationalities, all of those have to be counted. And the way that we do that, one of the ways that we can make sure that we don't miss that population, many times there's an organization that they're a part of, we can, you know, meet with the leader, or there's a faith-based organization that they're a part of that we can meet with the leaders just to make sure that we capture that particular, make sure we capture everybody, immigrants, everybody, because they have to be counted as well. So we want to make sure that we do that. So on that information that I'm giving you, as far as Beaufort is concerned, in this county, again, we want to make sure this population is counted. It has the Pigram, and as far as how many Spanish reside in this city, in this county, okay? And it says 5.4% of the county is Spanish, of course, 93.6% speak English, but 5.4% is Spanish. Well, that 5.4%, we want to make sure they're counted because we don't want this county to lose any dollars. Again, $1,623, that's a lot of money when you add it up, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people. So we want to make sure that you get your fair share in this county, and we don't want you to lose out, okay? So again, we want to make sure we reach that population as well, which that is a hard-to-count population, okay? So what we need to do, so what it is that you may be asking, so how can we, you know, what do we need to do, where do we come in? What the Census Bureau is doing right now, we're going around to different counties, we're meeting with the county commissioners, we're meeting with the cities, we're meeting with organizations, we're meeting with everybody. And what we want to do, we want to bring everybody together, we want to form what we call a Complete Count Committee. Again, CCC for us, we work off abbreviations, but Complete Count Committee, and what we're depending on with those committees is that we want the county to say, okay, we heard the presentation, we heard about the money that we could be losing, we heard about the money that we could be gaining, which you can gain some money through the Community Development Block Grant, you know, you can gain money from that, you know? And that, again, they get information from the census, so that's how important this is. And then there's other monies out there that you can participate and apply for, and you can get it because based on your census information. can get it because, based on your census information. I always used the example, um, years ago, many, many years ago, I had a nonprofit youth organization that dealt with young people. And I used to have parents that lived in that, that particular neighborhood, and they used to always ask me, you write grants all the time. Why can't you write a grant from, through your program to get a park for the kids? Get a park? And we used to hear that all the time. We need a park in this area, need a park in this area. So what I did, and this was many, many years ago, I think it was a nineteen-ninety census, that's how long ago it was. And what I did, I put the census information down just to see how many kids were in that area. Because if I was planning to go to the city or the county to ask for funding for a playground, a park for the kids, I needed to take something with me. I couldn't just go in there and say, look, these parents want a park, give them a park. No, it doesn't work like that. So what I did, I did my homework. I pulled the information down. Guess what? It was a lot of kids in that area, in that neighborhood. Based on that information, I took that and, and, and formed a city hall meeting, and we had this huge meeting. And I showed them the information, I did a presentation, and guess what? They built a park for the kids. Had I not had that census information to show them, prove this is why we need this park, because there are a lot of kids in this area, and there's no park, there's nothing for them to do. They built the park. Okay? Now, I don't plan to go around from place to place doing that, that's not what I'm called to do. But just to give you an example of how important this information is. So we need everybody to jump aboard. I, I really wish I would have spoken with the young lady that just left that's doing the, the, um, thing in April. I really would love to come to that. That sounds like a great thing. My heart is with children anyway. But I would love to come to that. But we need to collaborate, and just events like that, that's how we can collaborate. That's, that's what the census, we want you to form a partnership with us and say, look, I'm in it. Let's do this. Let's, let's, let's get together. So we're asking you to become, uh, in the complete count committee, become a part of that. If you want to get involved, if you want to participate, if you want to help bring more funds into your community, get involved. Get involved. And that's why I'm here. And that's my presentation.
Top question.
Yes.
Uh, considering that the primary purpose for the census in the United States Constitution was to determine our representative in the United States Congress, House Representatives, rather, as per state, uh, why are we counting immigrants? And if we are counting immigrants, are we determining green cards versus the illegals?
That's, that's the most important question that has been asked recently. And to answer your question, we have no answer.
Thank you.
We have no answer. And I'm sorry.
It doesn't instill any, uh...
But we have no answer. I'm so sorry.
No, no answer whatsoever.
Yeah, we, we have no ans... You know what? That's, that's been a very important, um, question that's been coming up in a lot of our presentations. And, um, I hate to say it, but you were the one, is always one, that asked that question.
He is the one. Tend to get to the meat of the matter.
Yes, yes. And you know, and this, it's not that it's a bad question. It's not a bad question at all. It's a very good question. And it's a question that has caused a lot of controversy, like recently, going on. So we don't have an answer for that question. I apologize.
But why, I mean...
We just don't have an answer.
This is the United States government administering a census every day...
You are absolutely right.
To determine just how our representative, representation will be in North Carolina in the United States House of Representatives. And we don't, this is not important. I mean, you think about it. Are we going to ask them, are you here legally or illegally? Have you got a green card? Can I see it?
Right.
And if you don't ask that, then you're getting a bad count.
Yeah.
When you're counting immigrants. And then you got to ask, why are we even counting them if we're not getting a correct count? Now, I can understand counting them if you are there to find out how many people are here illegally. Because we need to know. Right now, we, we don't know if it's ten million or twenty-two million.
True.
Somewhere in between. And, uh, we need to know if we're going to start talking about deciding, uh, to allocate amnesty.
You're absolutely, absolutely right. And the reason I cannot answer that question is because that's the question that's up right now. So, you know, and, and we're, we're told just try to shy away from it until we get some answers. So that's what we're doing. We're trying to get the answers. And valid question, we get it all the time, and you were the one. But we're, hey, we, we just don't, we don't have the answer for that yet. I'm so sorry. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Dengel.
Okay. Before I, I would like to say that the census is hiring, and I do have this information. Can you get those for me, please? The census is hiring, so, um, I'm going to leave this information with you. We are hiring, so I'm going to make sure I leave the flyers with you. So I'm going to leave, I have several packets with me. Thank you, Katie.
I ain't working.
Stan, you need to work with him to find out your answers. I'm afraid I wouldn't ask the question.
So I do have some information. Hope I have enough, whoever wants it. And all of the information that I've gone over, all of these flyers are in that information. But all of the information I've gone over, if you should have any questions or, um, want to go over the information, everything that I've gone over is in that information. So, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. The head's passed?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman and Board, thank you for allowing me to present to you today. Um, I am asking you to approve a resolution recognizing search and rescue efforts that happened in January in Craven County for the successful outcome of the three-year-old child, Casey Hathaway. It's always good to have a successful outcome. We don't always have successful outcomes. Um, but it's great to have one and want to be able to celebrate that with both our fire, rescue EMS, and law enforcement community, but also our citizens at large. We had a lot of citizen participation from Beaufort County specifically, uh, in this and Craven County, anywhere from prayers to providing food to, uh, helping out in the community. So with that, I just ask for your approval of the resolution that has been presented to you.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Come in. Come in. Go ahead. Did you ever find out about the bear?
I figured something crazy.
Find out who the bear is. That's a very good question, once again. There's been great discussion about the bear.
The, uh, the child stated that the bear, uh, stayed with him, and, uh, the Lord works in all kinds of ways.
Yeah, he does. How fast did they find the child to the house where the child left?
Less than a mile.
Less than a mile. And there were no scratches or...
Had some.
A few scratches.
Doing well.
Doing well.
Yeah. Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Stan, raise your right hand.
Okay. Stan, that's a conversation for another day.
We have the public comments. We have one person make a public comment. I remind you, it's three minutes, and Miss Mitch, thank you for being by with me.
Chairman Evans, Commissioners, good evening. Commissioners, thank you for your patience, your understanding, and your vision of what our justice system needs to be. I'm here tonight to reinforce your understanding because what could be more objectionable than lacking in social conscience? Eroding the integrity and functioning of our justice system? And based on state statutes and federally protected rights of those in our keep, leaving blatant opportunity for lawsuit due to physical constraints of our antiquated jail? Due to these current physical constraints, state rules, statutes, and for rights for the human beings in our jail, we will never be in ADA compliance. We will never be in compliance with our medical room. We will never be in client, in compliance as we are unable to properly separate inmates based on need. And we will never be in compliance with rights for visitation based on security, safety, and ADA standards. As to brick and mortar of the jail, for example, and due to lack of space, we fail in state rules for no lavatory in the medical room. Yet, due to being grandfathered in with state construction standards that apply to the jail's nineteen-sixty-something construction, we pass inspection. Getting away with no sprinkler system in the jail. How could we, as reasonable people, continue to allow this? And with all our jail problems, we are forced to continually send our detainees to our neighboring counties, doing this at great expense, lining the pockets of our neighboring counties. We need to know exactly how much spending that is and start keeping it right here in our own community. We clearly are long overdue for this new facility, adapted to the complexity of community need. Along with video arraignment and video legal advisement and twenty-first century functioning, we will at last reflect capability integral to our justice system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitch. Okay, we're down to items for consent. I need a motion to approve.
Set me.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your right hand.
The latter.
Okay, good. Okay, Mr. Buck. I'd like again to talk about...
I think most of you heard the presentation at the public hearing session. Um, the item on the agenda is a proposed text amendment for plat requirements for special subdivisions. Currently, special subdivision plats, uh, two to three lots only need to be signed by the planning director or planning administrators, owning administrator. Uh, minor major subdivision plats must be signed by environmental health unless the owner sign to certify that the lots are not for development. Environmental health has run into a few issues where special subdivision plats have been approved by planning and recorded with the register of deeds, but the lots ended up not meeting septic requirements when the owners came in to get permits. We want to avoid that. Uh, then the owners have to undergo the expense of getting their survey and deeds redone and going through that process. Um, this text amendment is being proposed to avoid those issues occurring and the hardship on property owners, uh, or subdividers of property. The proposed text amendment for special subdivisions, uh, went before the planning board, was unanimously recommended for approval, uh, at their March twelfth, twenty-nineteen meeting. The language would add, under special subdivision procedure, section three-point-oh-three, it would add three-point-oh-three-dot-three, signature blocks, which reads, required certificates on the final plat for a special subdivision include signature blocks for the surveyor, the subdivision administrator, and the review officer. The subdivision administrator shall verify that improvement permits for septic systems have been issued by environmental health for every lot in the special subdivision that is for development. Okay? Those are the ones that are for development. Each lot that is not for development must be labeled "not for development" on the final plat. Uh, I feel that that'll eliminate a lot of confusion. After discussion with several folks, board members, property owners, as well as the planning board, um, and environmental health and county staff, this is the best way to proceed by amending the text to make sure that undue hardships do not occur for the citizens of Beaufort County.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed. Hey, Mr. Buck, you want to talk about, uh, review officer?
Sure. Um, at this time, uh, as you're aware, staff, uh, has been working with planning staff at the Mideast Commission, Ms. Jamie Heath. Uh, unfortunately, Ms. Jamie Heath, uh, is no longer with the Mideast Commission. But we do have on staff Ms. Nola Roberts.
Hello.
Uh, and at this time, we're, we're requesting that this board, uh, appoint Ms. Nola Roberts as review officer, uh, so that she can go through the education process to be the review officer, uh, and take the place of Ms. Jamie Heath for, uh, that position in the county.
So moved.
So moved.
Uh, Richard. Got it, move it. Do you have one second?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Seven, two.
It'll take just another two minutes.
Go ahead.
And one thing that I would like to do is invite each and every one of you, um, to the Mideast Commission Annual Banquet coming up, um, in the next two weeks at, it's going to be located at Sunset Stables. It's going to be April the eighteenth, Thursday night, uh, at two-zero-eight-two Winslow Road, Robertsonville, North Carolina. Um, each of you should receive an invitation for this, to make sure to see each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Been good. Been good.
Are we good on that? Mr. Parker, would you like to talk about equalization?
Mr. Chairman? Boy, it seems like we just talked about equalization here again. We're trying to get some dates set up. Uh, I proposed some dates that, uh, I just took them off the calendar, and you need to let me know if these dates are okay for you.
We just heard what Mr. Buck said, right?
The eighteenth.
Yes, I did. You can't write into my dates.
Frankie, you had one, didn't you?
Yeah, Bobby, I, I have a problem with, uh, April the sixteenth.
Eighteenth, sixteenth.
Just a reminder, we only need four commissioners for meeting. So if one of you has a conflict, it's over six.
I think we... We have, we're going to be gone the twenty-third, that's the Farragut Conference, and we'll be gone twenty-third, fourth, and fifth. That's the NCPTAS, kind of, conference, and we will be there. So, any other time that you, except Saturdays and Sundays.
Well, you know, have we agreed to take out the sixteenth and the eighteenth?
Just the eighteenth, I think. Why don't you just, why don't you see how many people can go on the sixteenth? If we got plenty of numbers, that's fine.
I'll be the sixteenth.
I can go the sixteenth. I can go the sixteenth.
Are we good at the sixteenth?
Sixteenth, it's okay.
That's fine.
Okay? Seventeenth is a Wednesday. We, you probably want to, I don't know, but you have...
Well, I won't be on the, on the Wednesday. Everybody know that.
I did too. Anyone else on, how about the eighteenth?
It'd be kind of...
Eighteenth, we'll probably all be gone.
Yeah.
Right?
You need to take out the eighteenth.
Yeah.
That's your meeting, okay?
Take out the eighteenth?
Need about, at least two more.
Is the seventeenth good for everybody? How do you hear that?
Yeah. Sixteenth, seventeenth, okay.
Seventeenth?
We're just taking it.
Here's the only one I think we'll be missing there, so... How about the twenty-second? That's a Monday?
It's a little may.
Okay.
I think it was one, two, three days. We need one more. How about the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth? That gives us the end of all of April, the people that have decided.
Be five, but may.
Okay. Which one, twenty-ninth?
29th, that Monday. 29.
All right.
Everybody give it.
Got them, Katie.
You got them? End of 16th, 17th? Okay. All right.
Now, you know, if I may, when we start lining people up for these meetings, it's better for them to be waiting on us than for us to be waiting on them.
That's what we try every year, and you know people have people on.
Well, you need to tighten it up more than you had it last year then. You just tried last year, you didn't make it. You need to tighten it up more.
Just do the best you can.
We scheduled 20, and that's about.
Yeah, but it's the spacing that makes.
Tell them all come forward. Do we need a motion to approve these dates or just consensus?
What?
You need a vote.
So moved.
That's a little meeting, you can't.
Any more discussion?
So we're talking the 16th, the 17th, the 22nd, and the 29th.
Correct. Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand, please.
This could be too many meetings, but I'd rather advertise that we are finished and ask for more.
Be there the first meeting. Everybody got to be there the first meeting to be sworn in, all right?
Right.
Thank you, Bobby.
Okay, thank you.
She's in the house.
I couldn't say.
If Brian's going to talk about policy change.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The Beaufort County Commissioners were presented with a draft copy of the revised Beaufort County Personnel Manual on January 31 of 2019 during the Board of County Commissions' planning retreat. A presentation was made by Dolores Kreisman, Human Resource Manager, to explain the revision process and any recommended policy changes. Copies were distributed in order to give the board time to review the revisions and present questions or concerns to the county manager and our the Human Resource Manager prior to approval. The Beaufort County Personnel Manual had not been revised since May of 2005. The revised manual has been updated to ensure compliance with federal and state employment law. The recommendation is for board approval of the revised Personnel Manual for Beaufort County.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed?
We're on a roll tonight.
Thank you, Dolores.
Thank you.
Mr. Allegro, you want to talk about the NCDEQ planning?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is the NCDEQ planning and management grant. It was on your agenda last month, but we didn't have the contract. The contract has been sent to us. You have a copy of it in your agenda. We're requesting your approval for the actual contract. So I'd be glad to hear any questions yet.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the resolution.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Well, we're only getting $15,000. You are receiving $20,000 with the $5,000 match. That's a total of $25,000. It's a total of 25?
Yes, with our five. With our five.
There is one schedule that says that.
That's what I thought.
Back in the bag. It says both, but there is one schedule.
I thought I saw both in there, but I wouldn't. So which is the real one?
It's 25 total. There's a $20,000, and then our five.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed? We're going to clue Gary.
In the affirmative.
He's not here. Brian, you want to talk about the tax study, please?
Yes, I'd be glad to. You've got a short memo in there. The folks that came from the Association of County Commissioners Group to do the tax study, they were still working on it, had a conversation with Mr. Baker, says they'll have it done by the 15th of this month, and didn't know if the board wanted to have a special meeting to receive that report, or do you just want to wait till the next regular schedule? He can do it either way, but it won't be done until after the 15th. He had somebody still writing a section of that report.
I say just wait.
You want to wait?
Do it at the regular meeting when you say wait. You mean?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with that.
Did you second that?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
You may all be aware that we've had, we had an individual who had an offer pending on a piece of county property. It was determined from the newspaper and from our tax office that there was over $6,000 apparently on 44 properties. I am told that in back taxes that had not been paid. My understanding is that he has come forward and entered into a payment plan, has made a fairly substantial down payment, and has a payment plan to pay those taxes by June This got, was a little confusing in that he had, he had the high bid, which you approved at the last meeting. And I am further told that that bid was upset during the 10-day period after it was advertised. I believe that's correct. Is that right? And then, that then would be before you, but the same individual came forward and upset that bid during the 10-day period. So he has the current high bid, has now been advertised. It seems to me you, I guess you're being asked now to approve that bid, his current bid. We still have the matter of the back taxes being owed, and as I see it, I think it's up to you whether you want to approve his bid. You still have to execute a deed that I would prepare, and we could, in theory, hold that deed until it's paid. But I would just encourage you to give him to June the 1st to make those payments and that we not take any action beyond approving his bid if you're so inclined tonight and that we don't deed the property before June the 1st.
Now, he put the first bid in. It was upset. Then he went back and done it again. Has his 10 days expired?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So we've complied with the statute for the high bid that he now has. But you've got to approve that bid, and I would just, I think you ought to just shove it into neutral and give him to June the 1st to bring it up to snuff.
What grounds do we have to do that? I mean, the thing about it is, we know he owes taxes. I mean, let him have the piece of property. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, let him have it, and if he don't pay it, go after his property. I mean, that's what you do to ours.
That's up to you.
Yeah.
I'd wait.
So you're.
I mean, what's the problem? I mean, if he's bidding, he's going to get it anyway.
You're giving him time to.
Not if this guy pays his taxes. He won't get the property.
Yeah, he gonna get the property.
Is it the same guy that's bidding, that's, that owes money?
Yes.
Oh, so he can do that? Oh, I knew he could do it, but he can financially do it. He can afford to do that.
Back up.
All right, well, I don't.
I won't go that far to say that.
Let me break this into two parts. We've got the issue that the attorney has presented, which we really don't have any policy on.
That's right.
All right. We've got a second issue that I'm hoping you're going to bring to us, which is going to say that we're going to accept no offers from people that owe back taxes. Do you still plan?
No, I agree with that.
Do you still plan to present that?
Well, I think that's all part of this.
Yeah, well, you know, I think what the attorney is saying is, we're not going to close with him until June the 1st, when he performs on the taxes that he owes us. Then he can pay us for all of it, and we'll close with him on it. And I don't have a problem with that, the fact that we don't have any policy. But I am looking forward to the second part of this, which says, we're not taking any bid. No bids are accepted unless your taxes are paid up to date. I think that's good.
Brian?
The board currently has a policy on purchasing, that we will not enter into a contract with a vendor if they are delinquent in taxes to the county.
But that's fine.
So there's a little bit of a stretch there. It would be the county to interpret, the county attorney to interpret that, but that is out there right now, but not specifically the way you've addressed it.
Yeah, I can vote for it, the way that the attorney has presented it, that we wait till June 1st, but I also look forward to voting on the second part of this, which is going to clean up all of that.
My question to Bobby, is the payment plan, is June the 1st the deed sale being paid?
When, I think.
It's Kenyon.
Yeah, that's the collector, yeah. June the 1st, I talked to him this morning, and he said that was the arrangement. He had paid $1,500 on the back taxes, and they gave him till June the 1st.
Come up with $4,500.
To pay it off.
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Katie, do you have what you need for the motion? You're done?
And if you don't meet that requirement, put the property back up for bids again.
Yeah. Is that a part of the motion?
All right.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
I'll accept that.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Seven zero. Okay, we're down to items for discussion. Commissioner DeFitz, you want to talk about?
Well, I admit it, I thought we were going to get the second motion.
Oh, the second.
It's about moving forward, am I to accept bids from people who owe tax?
Who made the motion?
Well, I'll make it. I move that we not accept bids for surplus, for taxable surplus property, however you want to describe it, any property being sold by Beaufort County from people who are behind in paying their taxes.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
That makes good sense.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Second motion.
I don't know what about it. I played most.
Item for discussion. Mr. DeFitz, you want to talk about the meeting with the city?
Yeah, when are we going to do that? I just start with that, one question. When are we going to meet with the city?
We don't have a meeting date set yet. I've had a conversation with the city manager to talk about some things. He agrees it's an opportunity for us to get together. We've talked about some specific items, but we're trying to come up with an agenda and then work with the boards to determine. So we're still working on that.
Can we do it at least in early May so that we can?
We'll try to, yes, sir.
Before we get into our budget workshops? Good.
You done?
Yeah, he done.
That's it.
Okay, Mr. DeFitz, you want to talk about?
Item two.
Hardening of the schools?
Yeah, this issue won't take too long, but it is something we, again, need to meet with another governing body, although not a taxing body, but we need to bring that up as a point of, on the agenda, that we talk to the schools about their feelings about hardening the doors in schools so that we can keep children as safe as possible. Well, last year, you guys started to institute resource officers within the school system at a cost of over $800,000. And while that may work to some extent to alleviate part of the problem, it's not the only solution. My opinion, in dealing with the prospective school shooting, is that we do everything that we can and try to go from there to decide what's best. Now, I can tell you right now, hardening the doors would be a very inexpensive way to alleviate many of the problems of egress into the schools, and maybe we could, it would make a big difference, and I think we should consider that. It'd be a cost to the county, but we would need to do it at the, I guess, at the school system's behest. I'm not 100% clear on that, but they would probably want to have to have it done, and I can't imagine them not wanting to have it done.
We've already done quite a bit of that already, Stan. We did Eastern Elementary, we did Washington High School, we've taken care of the middle school.
And it's handled from one control point?
Huh?
Is it handled from one control point?
Inside the office, yeah.
It is?
You got to be buzzed in.
Okay, buzzed in, okay.
I don't know about South Side or North Side, whether they've started working on it yet or not, but I know the schools here in the local area are hardening.
Is it just hardening the exterior doors, or how about the interior doors?
No interior doors that I'm aware of.
You understand how, quite possibly, it wouldn't be a bad idea to be able to harden the interior doors, too?
Oh, I do.
Once you know where the prospective shooter is.
I think you can lock them from the inside, but not by a button.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. So can we put that on the agenda, where we meet with the school system? Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
Well, let me clarify something. I'm a little bit confused. Are you talking about looking comprehensively at each school's security to see if there's any way that we can reduce the cost of having officers in the school?
Yeah, I mean, eventually, that's it. We need, this body has looked at one avenue to alleviate a school shooting. There's other avenues we need to look at, and we need to do all of them, and then at some point, we need to decide what's most cost-effective. Because if you have resource officers, that's not going to be a viable option to have 100% control. In fact, I would wager it's probably a lot less effective than hardening the doors. Hardening the doors, I think, would give you a much better capability of stopping a school shooting. Resource officer, I mean, hopefully he'll be in the right place at the right time, but often they're not.
Let me clarify one thing here. Harden, it's not just hardening the doors, it's the security system that goes with hardening the doors. And when I say comprehensive security system, you look at that school and see how you're going to provide the security, possibly by reducing the number of resource officers.
Yeah, well, absolutely. Now, I think it's a good idea to have resource officers at high schools, because they're doing more than just, than protecting the children. But I sometimes wonder how efficient it is to have them at elementary schools when hardening the doors might be a better option. Of course, we, you guys don't want to talk about this, but I think at some point, we ought to talk about arming certain personnel with.
That's what you hate. Go ahead.
Eventually. We're going to get to that.
Commissioner DeFitz, I do agree with you about hardening the doors, but I will tell you, when I saw in the old Bruce Lee movie, when the guy got in his face and did karate and shattered the board, and he said, boards don't hit back. And so basically, what I'm saying to you is, a door is just a door.
Yes, exactly right.
You have a professional officer inside that school who is trained to take care of business, that makes it work, not just a door. And as far as I'm concerned, if you want to harden the doors, wonderful, but you do not need to take those officers out of those schools.
But you do agree, we need to do everything we can do right now?
Yes, I do agree with that.
Good. Let's work from that right now. Move on from that later.
We, just one comment. I think it's been three years ago, we had in the budget, was it $500,000 for security, which included some of the things that you were talking about. But during the budget process, when we meet with them, that's when they talk about their capital budget, and they've got in there every year, they have security measures in there, so.
And that's good, but I can tell you from my dealings with the school system, they're stretched pretty thin. So that might be the one thing they drop. What we need to do is let them know that money will be there from the county, because we care, too. And I think we might be able to get this done quicker.
Commissioner Richardson, you want to talk about the flood maps?
Oh, well, like the manager to tell us when we're going to get our flood maps approved.
I wish I could tell you. I don't have any additional update. The lobbyists was up there, we were up there, I've not heard any additional, hadn't had any additional follow-up from anyone.
So what's our target date?
We are still late this year, fall of.
2019.
Fall, yes, sir.
2019.
Yes, sir.
All right, okay.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to talk about the school?
Yeah, the school, the school computer program that NC State is doing, I understood that would be ready about this time.
It is. We had a conversation with folks with NC State, ORED, and they are in communication, are trying to get in communication with the superintendent, have some conversations with him. Our conversation together was that we would try to make that a presentation included with the joint meeting that the boards are going to have, because they want to present that to both the school board and the board of commissioners. So we are working with the superintendent right now to determine when that joint meeting will be, late April, 1st of May, is what they're looking at to do that.
Okay. You good?
Yep.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson, you want to talk about medical and operation costs at the jail?
Yeah, this may take a few minutes. Yeah, I'm concerned, we had a patient last year that we paid, gee, I've forgotten my numbers, $346,000 for medical on. He admittedly had been sent out of the county. No one in the county claimed that they knew anything about these expenses that were going on at a horrible rate. And I, at that time, raised the issue, how do we manage the outs? And I, at that time, raised the issue, how do we manage the outside medical care for jail inmates? Because if inmates are becoming problems, insofar as us having to provide medical care on this level, we have options. Well, nobody wanted to do anything about it. This board walked away from it. About a month ago, we got another bill, which was through the end of December, I believe. Same person, another $250,000. Both of these are unbudgeted items. And so, now, we've got a $600,000 inmate that is pleading guilty to murder, and the county is providing all of this care. And we're sitting in here arguing over nickels and dimes, when money is running out the door, in windows, sheets of it, in a torrent. Now, that bill was just through January, so we could have another $200,000 or so out there in medical care for this same person to bring this up to date. Now, once the DA was notified of this, and I talked to him, too, Brian, he immediately, within like six or seven days, he put a stop to it. He had options. Now, where I'm from, this is called the no-management system. Taxpayers have got plenty of money, we just keep dumping the money. Now, I asked about two or three weeks ago, and the excuse that was given to me was they were busy working on the budget for an update numbers on how money that we were spending for inmates for continuing care from the jail. And I don't have that information yet. They were busy putting stuff together. I hope to have it shortly. But, the fact, just the mere fact that accounting could not provide that information, tells me, there's not a system out there. We are doing absolutely nothing to control outside medical costs. Within the jail system, within the justice system, you don't have to take this as taxpayers. Once you see that you have a patient, an inmate that's costing you money, let's face it, if you're having to spend that much money on them, how far can they run? Then, we have options. Ankle bracelets are one option. Now, I'm not talking about just this particular inmate, I'm talking about all inmates in general. You can turn the guy loose on bail, the judge can review the case and say, "Well, you know, the bail was settled on this thing, he's costing you $20,000 a month. And I've reviewed this case, and I've decided to let this guy go home. We'll put him on ankle bracelet, or we'll just let him out until his trial, based on his own recognizance." In which case, he pays his own medical bills. You, the taxpayers, don't have to be beat around like this. And I am very concerned that the Board of County Commissioners has not directed the sheriff to provide such oversight. They do it in almost every other jail in the state. So, why aren't we doing it here? And I'm going to make a motion at this meeting or the next meetings, this is a discussion item, I'll probably make it at the next meeting, that whatever the fees are that we're having to pay for these excess above what's budgeted for outside medical care be deducted from the sheriff's budget. And if he has to let some deputies go, or he has to cut out that overtime, which is going through the ceiling, too, then he can start controlling his own budget. But, right now, the taxpayers in this county are being taken advantage of. So, I'm asking this Board of Commissioners, what are you going to do about it?
Charlie, you want to, did you want to make a comment?
Was that a motion?
He ain't gonna make no.
No, I asked the Commissioners, what are they going to do about it? I'll make the motion at the next meeting, that we deduct his excess expenses from his budget, and let him figure out how he wants to run the sheriff's department.
While Charlie's going up there, Mr. Richardson, I told you, y'all looked real funny, I said, "It was cheaper for us to stay in these guys' bones."
Yeah, you're right.
Now, you see us coming home to you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Richardson just said. There are a lot of options that are out there. There, pre-trial release is an option. Reducing bonds are an option. All of those things are part of the justice system, but not one of those things is determined only by the sheriff. A sheriff can't reduce a bond on his own. A sheriff can't put somebody on pre-trial release on their own. They have to be, in fact, they're judges' orders, that by law, there has to be a hearing that involves the prosecutor's office, the defense counsel, and judges that end up signing these things. I will say that there are plenty of counties that break that law a lot. They do. They'll get somebody, and they'll have somebody that says, "Hey, look, this person here, they had a medical event, and we don't want to pay for it." So, they go, and they'll call the judge in the middle of the night, and the judge, maybe not knowing the law, blowing the law, I don't know, making a decision, signs off on that person to be released. But, that does not take the county off the hook for that bill. There's case law after case law after case law that says it, that not only does it put the county back on the hook for paying the bill, but then you're also put on the hook and civil liability for trying to skirt the system that's put in there by law. So, those are options, and those are things that we try to do. Everybody that stays in our jail for more than about 15 days goes, has paperwork done, and it goes before a judge to see if we can put people on pre-trial release. We don't take part in bond issues as far as reductions unless we actually have a stake in the case, and then if we are asked, we will give an opinion on it. I had a conversation with the district attorney about the very topic. I know that the county manager did, I know that you have. Well, I had a conversation with him. And I'll flat-out say that he will say things differently to me than he would say to you, than maybe he would say to the county manager. But, the idea that you said that you made one phone call and the DA snapped his fingers is inaccurate at best.
I disagree.
Well, I mean, I'm sure you do.
Because the DA told me what he was going to do, when I called him, and he did what he said he was going to do. He's almost like Donald Trump.
Okay. So, I don't even have anything to say on that. Except for the fact of, he did have the conversation, he had the conversation with me. The timing of your request doesn't, might make it seem that he did it because of your call, but that's like saying that the sun's going to come up because the rooster crows.
Charlie, what did you guys do? You had eight or nine months. What did you do? Nothing?
We've made contact with the district attorney's office. You said, you said that we didn't, but we have. The person after he had the medical event, he had to be evaluated to make sure that he can still be a witness. Well, who do you think took him from one place to another to get evaluated? You know, that's based on a court order that's signed by a district attorney. So, if you're saying that the district attorney didn't know anything about it, then you're saying that he didn't know anything about something that he signed an order to have that same person taken from a prison to a hospital to be evaluated for the reason of whether he can still be a witness after that medical event. So, you might not think there's anything of it, but most normal people would understand that there's something a little bit more to that.
They would.
And you're a little bit more than a normal person.
Thank you.
But, thank you.
Charlie, can this particular inmate go to Central Prison?
We can't handle medical, we can't handle medical issues.
That's what I thought.
At our facility that other facilities may be able to take care of. So, as soon as we have an inmate that gets to the point where they are going to have to consistently be seen by medical staff, whether it's at a hospital or outpatient, then we have to farm them out to either the Department of Adult Corrections, who has medical facilities at their facility, or other county facilities, or regional facilities that have the capability of taking care of those medical issues. Our issues that we deal with medical, when it's found out, we get them the resource that we possibly can as timely as possible.
My question is for Anita and Brian. The stop-gap insurance that we purchased, does that cover the second?
It does. There was a stop-gap insurance policy that was, that's through the North Carolina Sheriff's Association that covers incidents like that. So, the second piece is covered, and they're currently filling out the paperwork to get that reimbursed. It's a payable, and then you get reimbursed by the insurance company.
What is the deductible or the?
Charlie just said it was $25,000.
Anything above 25?
Yes, the taxpayer would be $25,000. There's a deductible of $25,000, but anything up to, including, I just want to say it's $400,000, will be taken care of by the stop-gap after the stop-gap. As a reimbursement.
And it's my understanding, and Charlie can clarify that, is that when an inmate leaves the custody of the sheriff's office and is sent to Central Prison, then they essentially become their ward, they are responsible. If something happens to that inmate, they immediately take care of that inmate and don't call the sheriff's office and ask for permission to do that, because they are in their custody and their control. Exactly what the sheriff's office would do if they were in their custody and control. So, not speaking for Charlie, but they don't make a phone call to us to say, "Can we, can we help this patient?" They do what they have to do at the time to medically treat that patient, and then we find out about it.
It might be in question, Charlie. He wasn't sick when you was arrested, was he? So, you don't have no way of telling when somebody is going to get sick, do you? I'm just wondering.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Two or three things here. Number one, if you think you're going to incur a half a million dollar bill every year, and somebody else is going to pay all of it, $25, you're going to pay some crummy insurance premium, you're in la-la land. Because insurance companies base this on history. And if you think your insurance rates are not going to go up to the point you can't afford insurance, you need to wake up and get in the real world. We're talking about solving a problem here. We're not talking about running the giant excuse machine, because that's what everybody's been doing in here so far. What are we going to do to supervise the cost of outside medical care in our jail system so it doesn't break the county? Now, I know for a fact that there are a lot of counties that have a system for doing this. Okay, and I'll tell you something real simple. You can say they are in charge of it in Raleigh, and they can do whatever they want to. What's wrong with somebody in the jail calling these places every week and say, "Who's getting medical care that you have of ours?" It's called management. It's magic, and it really works. We have no management from this side, this side, or the sheriff. And you are paying the bills. So, what are we going to do?
What do you suggest we do, Mr. Richardson?
Alright, let's appoint. Let's appoint, yeah, seems like I'm smarter than the rest of you.
Tell me, tell me, what you suggest?
I'm not dumb enough to keep paying these bills.
Please.
Let's appoint a three-person committee of commissioners to look into this.
Who are the, what are the jails or counties that work in this system the greatest? You said you've spoke with one.
Well, Pitt County does. Almost every jail that's got more than 100 prisoners has got a system to take care of these things. They screen it. Some jails have people that are hired to do nothing but get people out of jail, believe it or not.
Oh, Lord, yes.
Now, let's go back to my suggestion. You asked for my suggestion.
Yes, I want to hear it.
Let's appoint a three-person committee to look into this. Well, I'm waiting.
You wait?
That's a motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, does your motion also include looking into other avenues to get people out of jail?
Well, it can. Right now, I want to harp, these guys can't handle but one thing at a time.
You just lost me.
So, that's why I'm talking about the medical part of it.
Oh, come on.
Since I can't handle one thing at a time, I'm going to make sure I vote right with my own wind.
What is your motion, Mr.?
My motion is that the Board of Commissioners appoint a three-man committee to take a look at jail excess medical cost and how to control them.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, my comment is that, you know, here, here we've got a commissioner that wants to go over there and try to manage the sheriff's department, and he's an elected official. We, I've been a commissioner going on my fifth year, and this is the first time that we've had, we've had this kind of a bill. I can't remember, Charlie or Brian, if we've had one in the previous.
Oh, they've been there. They just haven't told you about them.
I guess my comment, when it comes to, you know, management, everything that you throw out is all management.
Yeah.
You've been a commissioner for 20-some years, why didn't you realize that it was a liability, and we have the stop-gap? You've had, you could have brought that up?
So, this is my fault now?
Well, no, I'm talking, I'm just using that as an example of your management style.
You're too close to friends with the sheriff to make an honest vote on this, Frankie.
Well, I, I, look, I don't have any problems.
Let it go.
I don't have any problems being friends with the sheriff.
That's your buddy.
I'll tell you one thing, I sure don't want somebody that's been picked up for murder with a bracelet on their ankle.
Tell me how far he's going with a $600,000 medical bill, Frankie?
Oh, no.
There's a little bit of common sense goes into this, Frankie.
Nobody knew it was going to have that. Nobody knew it was going to have that medical.
You're backing up on me. Do you want to solve the problem of excess costs in the jail, $600,000 bills like this, and other bills that keep coming in, or don't you?
I've got confidence in the management of the jail, and I've got confidence in our county management to handle that. And we finally have got some stop-gap. And that was, did Hood recommend that, or did you and Anita do that on your own?
Charlie.
Charlie, okay, thank you very much.
You still haven't solved the management problem. Your insurance, they're not going to keep keeping you guys on when you have bills like this.
Well, you tried to solve the management problem, and you lost in the election.
That is not about, wait a minute, you're going cross-country. Do you want to solve this problem, save these taxpayers from money, Frankie? Or you want to get out in the gutter, because I'll get there with you in a heartbeat?
No, no, no.
You won't like it.
No. I'm not going to vote for it, so that's standing my story.
Are we ready to vote?
I ain't.
Yeah, let's vote. All those in favor of Hood's recommendation to set up a three-man, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Who else?
Okay, Hood, you want to talk about jail cells not being used?
You know, I don't think, this is on this subject, it's not on the last subject. There must be commissioner meetings that I don't go to, that I don't even know about. Because this jail thing popped up, where half of the jail has been shut down because of the cells that needed repair of both computer ware and hardware. And it came up all of a sudden with no notice. And there's all kinds of stories out there that everybody in the county has known that this needed repairing for the last 15 years, but nobody's done anything about it. And I am concerned, there was a memorandum written by the chief deputy last week. We've had meetings beginning in January, and we've had meetings in February, well, really at the end of January, February, and part of March. And I don't think all the cards have been put on the table with what's going on here, because now I'm finding out that this problem started out with a meeting with you, the manager, in the middle of January, that we were shutting down half of the jail. Nobody told the commissioners about it. But, there's one thing in there that you need to know. A few of the commissioners were talked to. So, I guess the rest of us didn't need to know about what was really going on in the jail. Because after the budget presentation, in, at the end of, when was that, January? Whenever the budget presentation was made, I started digging around in it. And I found out that we had two blocks in the jail had been shut down claiming that they couldn't be repaired. And I've asked one question now for six weeks. Who did you call, and when did you call them to repair the jail cells? And I still don't have an answer. Some people were called, but they gave out $800,000 prices, but nobody has been asked to isolate one of these jail cell blocks and see if the repairs can be made. Now, I'm on board with what's over there, is archaic insofar as the mechanical part of the doors, and it is archaic insofar as the computer system that provides the security. I'm on board with replacing that as a repair item. I am not on board with the slow-trip process that we're taking with an RFP and all of this stuff in order to do this. So, I'm not, one of the things that I wonder is, why can't we just take one cell block and have somebody look at it and assess it and say, "This is what it's going to cost to get these things going temporarily until you can do a permanent fix." We're spending $2,500 a day. We're spending $675,000 this year of excess expenses. We're spending $675,000 this year of excess expense keeping prisoners out of county simply because we won't repair some jail cells until we can get a permanent fix on the system. Now, you know, we're back to management, guys. That's what we're elected to do. Look after the county's money. And we hire a manager to help us do that. But, already, we've got the $600,000 man, we've got $675,000 this year going on where we're keeping prisoners out of county. And we've got a long, drawn-out process in the jail for what I call normal repairs. So, I'm concerned that this is going on. I'm also concerned that I haven't been informed about what's going on. I'm concerned that these people apparently talked to a few commissioners, and it never comes before the Board of County Commissioners, the whole problem that we've got a serious problem in the jail, and we need to figure out what to do about it. A few people in the background are making these decisions, and they're not telling everybody what's going on. Now, you guys just skirted a lawsuit for backroom dealing. And you're right back to doing the same things you've been done again. Every commissioner on this board needs to have the same information at the same time. The buddy system is not going to work. Keep trying it, because these people out here are gonna take you out.
Mr. Richardson, you, when we had three different vendors come in, I think Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, we walked into jail and you sat in the meeting with the guys from Georgia and said, let's do it right. This system, and you admitted that it's 50-year-old hardware. The software is on DOS system, we have the Windows 10s, and you wanted it done right then.
I still want it done right, but why do we need to waste $2,500 a day? The number of people that the sheriff's department is hauling back and forth from these other jails to court means there's not any sheriff in being done in Beaufort County. You know, law enforcement itself is suffering because people are hauling prisoners around. But, nobody has yet said to Georgia Iron Works, or whoever it is, that's Georgia Iron, it's a different outfit, Georgia Security, whatever they're called, tell us what it'll cost to fix this block of cells and get it operating while you're preparing your plan to fix all of the cells and put a new system in and solve the whole problem. As long as the county has plenty of money, I just think that we're just gonna keep spending money. You can't do that forever. There has to be some management go into this. And the board needs to be informed of this stuff all at one time. Because we were informed at that budget meeting, and then Charlie writes a memorandum that says, oh, yeah, there were meetings back in January. And we talked to some commissioners. No kidding. Who did they talk to, guys? Who are the insiders?
I put out my disclaimer, I wasn't at the meeting, Hood.
I was not at the meeting either, Hood. You scratched that off.
Okay, then the manager is the one that's making all these decisions, and he's not coming to us and telling us what's going on. Are you willing to eat that, Mr. Manager, that you're not doing your job?
No, sir. Because I can tell you we're doing our job, we're doing our job legally.
Very good.
And let me explain the process. General statutes require that if you're gonna do a project that costs more than $500,000 in construction, you are required to do it in a formal bid notice. That is what we're doing. You actually suggested to me an email that we not do that and break the law, and we will not do that.
I did not suggest that.
Yes, you did, Commissioner Richardson.
Well, you say your thing, and then I'm gonna say mine.
I'm sure you will. But, every board member got that same email. And that email was, we oughta do something different so we don't have to do that. And what we explained was, that was against the law. And we're not gonna do that. We had the state auditor come down and investigate us because a commissioner called him because they didn't think we did the process right in the radio project. So, we're gonna make sure that we cross all the Ts and dot all the Is, which is exactly what we're doing. The RFP's on the street. It went out Friday. They're coming back in on the 15th, and it'll be here for the board at the next board meeting. But, you can't just go in and say, give me a price, because it's, the law says that if it's more than a half a million dollars, which is what we anticipate, it's what the folks from Georgia Detention and the rest of the folks said, that's the way we have to do it. We can't just say, come in and give us something and then do something different. They've been working, Georgia Detention, Charlie can tell you, they've been working on it for years. They call them in all the time to do work. They've said, it can't be fixed anymore.
Why didn't the commissioners know about this before January the 15th of this year? Why?
You were told at the board meeting. Charlie and I had a conversation.
Which board meeting?
At the retreat. We had a conversation.
That was in February of this year.
No, it was in January.
January 30th of this year.
Just like the memo that he wrote you that said, he and I had a conversation. He said, we've got some issues, we're gonna have to shut some stuff down. What are we gonna do about that? Let's make a presentation to the board. He made a presentation to the board, all at one time.
Let me go back and clarify what I did say.
We're gonna take a recess, we got some.
Well, we're gonna come back, are we gonna be able to talk when we get back?
Absolutely.
If you ain't dead, you better talk.
I apologize, but we're gonna have to take a recess. We're old.
Take a recess. Mr. Richardson, you said you have one more comment?
Well, the only thing.
Wait a minute, Katie's not here. Standby.
All right.
Katie, you ready? I can roll.
Okay, the only thing I wanted to say is, in the email that all the commissioners got, what I was proposing was that, why don't we, the same thing I started off with, why don't we take one of these cell blocks and see what it will cost and take to get it going? Because there, I don't know, how many people are in a cell block, Charlie? 15? Yeah, 15 in a cell block. 15 times 50 is $750 a day that you save if you can get that going. So, you ask yourself, what will it cost to get this cell block going? And nobody has done this analysis. And they tell me, I don't know anything about management. That's all I had to say?
We're good.
Okay. Mr. Langley?
Thank you. I'm not gonna make any type of motion tonight, but I just want to start a discussion about the Public Safety Center complex. And I wanna say, first of all, is, just based on the last conversation that was just held here, is plenty of information to support a new facility. I mean, just talking about medical costs and inmate transport and the taking deputies outside of the county instead of being here in the county, taking care of business, and it's a shame that your prisoners are elsewhere and something happens to them and the facility that they're in does all these, takes care of all this medical stuff, and then you get a bill for it. Whereas, if they were in your own facility, you would already know about that. And I have a few more numbers for you. 2016, 17, and 18. A million dollars safekeeping. Overtime, $732,298. Then overtime in the jail, the first was overtime for the deputies. Overtime in the jail, $211,423. 1.9 million dollars. Then factor in the repairs that are constantly being done in the jail. You know, sometimes, you know, if, I'll just use the analogy with an automobile. Sometimes you get to the point, you say, well, I'm just tired of messing with this thing. It's one thing right after another. It's simply time to replace it and move on. We have got to stop throwing money into a money pit. Because that's all the detention center is right now, is a money pit. And it's time for us to have a serious conversation about what exactly we're going to do. And one of the problems that I have is, everybody keeps talking about how many inmates are inside the facility. That is not the problem. The problem is classification, officer safety, inmate safety. It's just like this, let me give you this example. If there's an altercation in the facility, and let's say the jail is using pepper spray, there's an inadequate ventilation system in that facility. So, when he sprays Peter, Paul, Johnny, and everybody else, gets pepper spray. And you gotta understand this about a detention center. The purpose of the detention center is not really to execute a sentence, it's to hold a person until they can go to trial. And one of the other things I want you to think about, and it may come to your house one day, is you and your wife been married for years, and then one day you have a great falling out, she picks up the phone and calls 911. He hit me. So, now you have 48 hours in the Beaufort County Jail. But, there's no place just for guys who are coming in who've been accused of domestic violence. You will go into the general population. That's what I mean about classification, is just like with the females. They got one cell block, am I right? For females. And regardless of what charge this female has, she's in there with the female who's in there for shot, listening to a package of pork chops. But, she's in there for slicing someone's throat. And you have them right there together. And I wanna say this to you all. Nobody jumps up and cheers that, yea, 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 we're going to build a jail. It's not one of the things that communities look forward to doing. You build a jail out of necessity. And I'm saying to you now, we're at that point where we need to stop throwing money into that place. You're just throwing it away. I guarantee you, five or six million dollars have been spent, non-refundable. When you spend it, it is gone. And I'm just asking folks to really consider not allowing us as commissioners to make the decision about the new facility, but you as the taxpayer to make that decision. And no, that's not something that could happen anytime this year. Because the earliest this referendum could go forward is in 2020. So, that's a whole year to talk about it, open debate. And I can live with whatever the public says. But, I just can't sit here on the seat of do nothing and not try to effect a change. The public has the power. You have the power to say yes, you have the power to say no. And I wanna say this one last thing, and I'm gonna leave it alone. We're gonna keep messing around until one inmate gets the wording right on a lawsuit. And Beaufort County's gonna have to build a facility that they will have no control over. Right now, if we do it, we have a lot of say in it. But, once a federal court or state court mandates what we do, that's it. There's no reasoning with anybody. Ask some of the other places that's been sued, how in the jail they have mahogany desks. That lets you know just how extravagant it can be when the courts say you have to build it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I wanna go with this too. You know, I appreciate what my friend Jerry Langley has said here, his heart's in the right place. There are some arguments that go with this. But, this does not take away the management problems that we have with the jail that we have. We have 18 on average every month, it'll go from 16 to 19, prisoners who have been in there from six months to two years without having a date set for a trial. If you divide that out, you, the jail we've got is very adequate if you can take care of that. And you ask yourself, why is that? And the reason is because of the games that are played. That's why we need an oversight committee to look at the jail. They'll put people down there and they'll sweat them out for, if you will rat somebody else out, we will reduce your charges. We know you can do it, and we're not calling your case till you do. That's one of the games that's played. There's a lot of other games. There's the multiple warrant game that's played, where we got three warrants on you, and guess what? You're getting out tomorrow, and the guy's standing there when you get out serving another warrant on you, so you go right back in jail. Now, there's all kinds of things that are not right that go on in the Beaufort County Jail. Unless you've got to get the management straightened out on what you've got. Because if you build a bigger jail, you're just making the problem bigger. They will hold more people to sweat them out. The bonds will be set higher in certain cases. The games will go on. Our jail does not deliver justice by any stretch of the imagination.
Brian, you ready to talk about?
Okay, I got a question for Jerry. Item one. How big a jail are you looking to build?
Well, basically, when it was stopped, the last, the same plans are, we still have them.
230-something bids?
It was not that. What did we scale that back to? Yeah, it was less than 200.
Less than 200? You got a location?
None at this time. There's two possible locations, but we don't really have it yet.
And you said something about overtime. I understand the jail overtime possibly because you, there's certain inefficiencies probably in this jail than there are in other jails. However, we would need a lot of personnel to run a 150, 180 bid facility.
If you will go to Lathan County, the exact same footprint that we had, they built a facility. Their price was initially $21 million. They built it for $18 million. And basically, what they have is, in their control center, let's say you got a wing of cells here, one person controls that whole section. They never leave, they constantly talk to everybody. And see, and one of the things that you gotta understand about the new facilities is this, when you talk recreation, recreation is not necessarily outside of the facility. I think it's 75 feet. If you just have a straight hallway, 75 feet where they can walk down and back, you have satisfied the recreation part of that. There are so many things that this jail does not have. And basically, what I want people to do, ask questions. Ask questions. Do the research. I mean, you would never know if you never ask any question. There are a lot of things that happen in this facility. If it was a modern facility, they would not happen. Because in a modern facility, you will have nurses there the entire time. And there won't be any so-called hiding places inside a new facility. There are so many advantages to having a brand-new facility. I mean, think about this. Look at Nash County. Their inmates escaped, they were outside, walking, cut the fence, and they were gone. But, that was the requirement for the exercise. But, what I'm saying is, you don't have to have outside, you can have that inside. And then ventilation, someone comes in with a communicable disease. Let's say someone comes into jail with TB's. How do you separate them? You cannot in there. Everybody's exposed. Those are just some, what I'm saying to you is, people, it's important that you as the public, ask these questions before you make an ax murder a rich. Basically, I'm telling you, it's gonna happen sooner or later. There are some people who have filed lawsuits against the county, and their problem is, the wording was wrong. You just wait until somebody's complaint has the right wording in it, and we're all gonna be sorry. So, I'm putting it back out here, and I hope next month that we can have further discussion about this. And I realize a lot of people don't wanna do this. But, I'm not saying do this just to be doing it. I'm saying do this because it is the right thing to do as far as the people who are incarcerated inside it and the people who work inside of it. Let's think about then. Everything is not always about dollars and cents. What I'm asking you is, where is your humanity? That's what I'm asking you. Everybody who goes to jail is not guilty. Innocent people go to jail every day. That's all I got.
Well, just, and to follow up, because I only got about a minute. That was a good soliloquy. I think I said that right. I don't say that word every day. But, I think what you're doing is better this time than last time, where you wanna give the people a chance to speak on this issue, and that's good. There's gonna be a different kind of financing options, I'm sure, that will be considered as well as the cost factor and the size of the building. And the location is gonna be very important. But, I would just want you to know, I still think the commissioners need to do everything within our power in correcting the door problem and renovating the hardware and computer ware, for lack of a better word, problem that we have right now in the electrical. I would like to see that done. I would like to see that done as cheaply as possible. 1.5 million dollars sounds like a big price tag to me and half a million sounds a whole lot better. And I don't want us to use the problems we have now as a springboard to build more than what we need later.
And I, and I want to, I want to say this to you. I mean, the repairs regardless have to be done.
Yeah.
I mean, because if you had a referendum, it would be on the ballot in 2020. We're in 2019 and then you're talking another year or two after that. So, I mean, some things in that jail still need to be fixed because you still have to run that facility. And certainly, we don't want to handicap the Sheriff's Department in any way. I mean, we need, we just simply need to do what is right. It's always right to do what is right. Thank you.
Okay, Brian.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the board. Just to take you back on the Cooper's piece of property. A piece of property that was donated to the county, um, had an existing boat landing on it and been, and has been used for that. About a week ago, I got an email from one of the design engineers with the Wildlife Resources Commission. Sarah had worked on the project with us initially in looking at constructing a boat ramp at that facility. As you recall, um, we had worked a couple of years ago on, with Wildlife to design, they, they designed a ramp for public access. Um, we're actually gonna fund that. There were some, there were some issues that occurred and that project was withdrawn. We went back to the town after some changes and, and they said we'd like to do that again. We went back to Wildlife and Wildlife said we don't have any money to do that. We don't have any construction money now. We only have maintenance money. So, um, so that's kind of where that property sits. Sarah sent me an email the other day that said there was a grant opportunity with the North Carolina Public Beach and Coastal Water Access Program. Like, we've used that before, um, where we could apply to put in a boat ramp. Had a conversation with her back and, and she said the North Carolina Wildlife would be glad to design that facility. And although we would have to put it out for bid, they would be glad to bid on it as well because that's what their folks do is build those. There is a matching piece of that to that grant. There's a 10% match that local, that, uh, local governments who are tier one, which we're a tier one county, would have to provide for that grant. 5% of that has to be a cash match. Uh, Wildlife said we'll give you that 5% cash ma, cash, cash match. So we were having that conversation about that piece of property. And then we had a conver, then we had an inquiry from a local developer about acquiring, uh, purchasing that piece of property from the county, uh, looking to develop it and, um, and, and do an RV park and, and a marina and, and dockage and those kind of things. So the conversation then shifted, and, and this is all the conversation going on in my office, uh, about was there an opportunity to do that and then move to the other section? Because remember Wildlife looked at another piece of that piece of property and said, if you go past the gut, maybe we can put a, a ramp in there. The issue that we run into there is we gotta cross the railroad track. There's been some conversation, my understanding that that railroad track may not be in use too much longer. But the, the stumbling block for us initially was that that was about a $200,000 cost to get across that railroad track because they were gonna require you put gates up. And, and, you know, if that's something that, uh, is gonna be consistently used, then gates would have to be there. If it's not and, and done away with, then you probably wouldn't have to. What, what I am looking for is some direction from the board on that property. There is an opportunity that's been presented to you. I've, I've received a letter of interest, uh, an inquiry about the, the property, uh, from a local developer. And i- it is on the section, the, the existing section where you originally looked to put the Wildlife ramp. Again, looking to, um, put in an RV park with marina, cabin rentals, docks, dockage, bulkhead the property, uh, go in and, and dredge out the slip so that you could have adequate boat access and that would put it back on the, the local tax rolls. There's an opportunity to do that. If the board wishes to choose, you'd have to go through an upset bid process. You have to put it out there, let there be an offer made. You accept the offer and you'd go out there for bid, for, for an upset process, just like you did with this recent piece of property. And then we could also look to Wildlife to say, how about you help us on the upper side of the property with maybe a boat landing? So what I'm looking for from the board is some discussion direction. I, I don't know that, that there is, there is a little bit of a timeline on the application for the grant. Don't know if we'd even get that or not. But the, the pre-application deadline is April the 22nd, so we'd have to move fairly quickly on that if you wanted to pursue that. But I think there's an opportunity to pursue that on the upland piece, um, on, on the town side of the gut where they originally showed the second landing. Uh, and then have a discussion about disposing of that existing piece of property, um, to, through the upset bid process for developer who may wanna, who has said he wants to, to do some work there and develop it and make it an RV park and, and, and do some things that would put it back on the tax roll. So you know as much about it as I know about it and just want to get some direction from the board on where you want to go with that.
Mr. Chairman.
From what you said, uh, I think we'll go as far as we can to sell the property to the, the contractor that wants to develop, get it back on the tax roll, will be found by.
Mr. Dether.
How, uh, Brian?
Yes, sir.
How do, what is the feelings amongst the alderman and Bell Haven?
I, I don't know the feeling of the alderman. I've had a conversation with the city manager and she was gonna kind of feel that out. I know, I think she's had a conversation with a, with, um, I'm not sure directly with the developer, but with maybe some folks associated with the developer. So I don't know the answer to that question. Uh, it is, it is essentially what, what, and, and the reason I called her and said, let's talk about this, and I told her I was planning on bringing this to you so they could have some conversations, because what we certainly don't want to do is get sideways on anything.
Now, I have another question. I, I don't believe I was on, uh, on the board when you guys acquired that property. Is there a remainder clause in the deed?
No, sir. It was, uh, there was a discussion at the time from the board, uh, with the donator as to whether there was some, um, whether there had to be some sort of use of that property. Um, and, and there wasn't. They essentially said, no, we, we'd kind of like for it to be something that gives back to the community and is a part of it, but there was, there was no requirement that it be put in strictly public use or strictly whatever, you know?
Point three.
An outright donation.
Good, good, good. Point three, and I would like to send a signal here, uh, I'd like to see us get whatever money we've got in and out, including what, what monies we may have to spend on the boat ramp. And hopefully that'll set a stage for the bid process. And I hope this board will, or we need to get our money out of this.
We got the money in it.
I think there's.
Oh, we got money in it.
I think there's a, you know, there's a minimal amount of money in there right now. We've done some, we've done some studies on it. We've done some engineering work on it for the brownfields. It's currently, um, it's currently sitting on the desk of the brownfields folks. They've approved it as a brownfields, uh, site. We're just waiting on the agreement to be written, so there's part of it.
Let me caution one thing on, on the agreement.
And I want to see us make a profit.
On brownfields is be careful what you put in there for the use of the property because there are some properties that I know of that are being held up because of the wording in that agreement, because somebody wanted to do something a little different with it. They're saying, oh, you can't do that. So we, we need to make it as broad as we can when we do that contract.
Yeah, we haven't gotten the agreement yet. It's still sitting on their desk. It's been approved. We've got the letter and that happened over a year ago. We got the letter that said it qualifies and you can do that with it. We're just waiting on them to write the agreement. And my understanding with this is they write a generic agreement, send it to us, and then we negotiate on it.
Yeah.
Um, the, the other piece of that is, um, it's not a, when, when you hear brownfields, you think petroleum and ugly stuff. My understanding from the conversation with them, the studies they've done, it's mostly fertilizer and things that can be handled through what they call natural attenuation, which just means you just let it.
The corner, the corner next, over there next to the traffic light is petroleum, but it's not strong petroleum. But let me just say the one point I wanted to make. I don't mind doing this. I'd rather sell it and let somebody else have it and operate it and get it on the tax rolls because they're gonna build you a nice boat ramp anyway. It's gonna provide some jobs. It's gonna be a good thing. But I don't want to get stretched out in negotiations because what happens on a lot of these things is the negotiations last forever and then the deal falls through. So I think we should set a, a time limit when these negotiations are gonna be over with, otherwise we're moving on to something else.
Yeah. Hang on, Commissioner Waters.
I want to, a couple of points I wanted to make is that both tracks that we're talking about were gifted to the county. And there was really no strings attached to what was gonna be done with it in the future. But because they were gifted to the county, I would like to see us maintain public access, which we can do that with a seven acre track that's part of the Tann Dock. And that's where Wildlife originally said that they wanted to be because that's a deeper area coming in for a boat ramp. So that handles that problem. The, a lot of the local people that I've talked to ever since we've acquired it says, you know, we want it back on the tax book. And, uh, you know, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of suggestions, but nobody's come to the table with any money. We had one person that wanted to do all of it and, you know, he wanted us to go, was it to China?
Yeah.
And I said, I just can't imagine this being on the front page of the Washington Daily News, that two of the commissioners and the county managers go into China to a trade show to promote this piece of property. But, you know, this is, for the first time, we've got somebody, a local developer, and somebody that wants to do what a lot of local people have asked. The one thing that I've heard over and over again is RV, you know, some kind of a campsite, uh, which, you know, that's part of, that's part of their plans. And I think when we, when we sell the property, you know, we put the money in some kind of a capital fund and we use that to attack whatever we've got to do on the railroad track in order to entice US, I, I say, North Carolina Wildlife Commission to come in there. But I think it's, I think it's a win-win. Uh, you know, we, we're having seven acres of public access, which joins the Tann Dock. It helps clean up. Uh, I guess, you know, the developer probably can't use the wetlands, so we could retain, I guess, part of the wetlands that's.
That was part of the conversation we had was that the wetlands don't necessarily do the developer any good. And if we could maintain, if the county would maintain those, it's not like we would need to do anything to them. And it might give us the opportunity for a grant to go in and maybe a boat ramp, something that would enhance it.
Give him the wetlands.
Uh, but, but it's not like we would, we would have to do anything to it.
Yeah, we don't need to be, we got enough real estate. We don't, we don't need to be taking that on. It's in the city limits of Bell Haven. If you want to do, if you want to do that and deed it to the town of Bell Haven, I don't have a problem with that. But I don't want the county to take it. It's another, somebody will find a way to spend money on it if we keep it.
And, and quite honestly, that, that is, that is an opportunity because the town has not received some of these grants. So when you ha, when you've never received a grant, which the county has, you score higher on those grants if you're a first-time recipient. So there may be an opportunity to do that. But, but from that perspective, it, it, it wasn't necessarily a benefit for the developer and it may be able to provide some additional.
Some of those wetlands could be a benefit for the developer because you can, you can buy the wetlands back if you really need them, uh, but it gets to be a real serious problem, so.
And that can all be in the negotiation.
Commissioner Booth?
I, I saw the hood says, is put it back, sell it. But I don't want somebody to come and say we're gonna buy it today and two years from now we hadn't got any money.
No.
I don't want it to be tied up for two years so someone else can't, if some, if another developer comes.
What's a reasonable negotiating time? Four months?
Well, so here's, here's kind of the process. Um, and, and you're aware, there, there are certain ways, there are only three ways you can get rid of property that the county owns. Uh, you can do it by sealed bid. You can do it by, um, negotiated offer and upset bid.
Oh, yeah.
And then there's a third one and I just lost it.
But that takes care of the time problem.
But our, what I would propose to you, in fact, and I had a conversation today with one of the folks from the School of Government, the, the concern you have is that you have, you, you negotiate the piece, you do the negotiated, uh, offer, and then you have to do the upset. So you have to put it out there and say, this is the amount of money somebody's gonna offer. So you go through the 10-day process. The concern you may have is that somebody else comes in and says, oh, yeah, I'm gonna do the exact same thing, bumps it up, and then they get it and they don't do what they say they're gonna do. So my conversation today, and I don't have the answer yet, was with the School of Government to say, how do we put a process in place so that we're guaranteed, whether it be a clawback provision on that that says if the developer doesn't do what they say they're gonna do, that you've negotiated with them to do? If they don't do that, then it comes back to the county. So you don't have somebody who picks it up because they've got a lot more cash in the bank and just sits on it.
We've got that on all of that land out at the industrial park. If you buy a lot at the industrial park and you don't, uh, you don't use it in a certain amount of time, you have to deed it back to the county. Of course, we give you your money back, but we get the land back.
So there's a process in which we do that. And, and I don't, I'm not necessarily concerned with what we have right now. I think you've got a reputable developer who's interested in doing it, who will move as quickly as possible. It's just for something else that may come in there. We would just want to make sure we negotiate on that right so that everybody's protected, both the developer and the county on that side. So I think what I'm hearing, and what I would need from the board is just direction. Do you want us to, to start, because the way you start the process is the developer then comes to us and says, I want to buy this piece of property. And we've got to define what that piece of property is for X amount of dollars. And then it comes back to you as a board with whatever stipulations on it and you say, we now make a motion to accept that and start the upset bid process. Then it gets advertised, just like you're familiar with, and then if, it, it goes up or down, you know, it goes up if it has to, and then you go through the process until there are 10 days where nobody offers an upset bid. At that point in time, comes back to the board and you can say, close the deal and we're done. At any point in time, the statute allows you to say, I'm out of it, I don't want to do it anymore and just stop it all. So if that's where you want us to go, that's the next step we would do at the developer. And then I also would need some direction from you. You want to pursue the pre-application with Wildlife on the, on the, on the gut that's further up with, with a, with a ramp under this grant opportunity.
Well, that's the piece, excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The, the piece that you're talking about now on the gut, that's the public access piece you're talking about.
That would be, and what we talked, what we talked about with Wildlife was, of course, we don't want to maintain it. We don't want the infrastructure to maintain. And what they said was, if you build it, if you get this grant and you build it to our design standards, state wildlife design standards, then we will take over it and we will look after the infrastructure. You just need to cut the grass and pick up the trash, just like we do at the other places. So that would get it off the county's responsibility for the long-term infrastructure piece.
Well, I said pursue it. I mean, it, it said 5%. I mean, it's no guarantee you're gonna get it, but I would still say pursue it. But I would also ask the town of Bell Haven for some input on it also.
We, we've had that conversation and what we would probably do is a joint application for the grant and simply because the towns never received that grant. And if we do a joint application with them, then we get more points on the grant application and, and we may get awarded before someone else would get awarded.
Do they split the, the, the 5% on the joint application or do we?
Wildlife, Wildlife has said that they.
They're gonna absorb it all.
The 5% cash match. The, the rest of the, the rest of the 5% is in kind services. We'll certainly come up with that.
That's a no-brainer.
That, that seven acres is right next to Purdue's grain facility.
Yeah.
Okay. Since you reversed the process, I'll make the motion that we pursue the, the grant for the boat access on the seven acres that's adjacent to Purdue, uh, Granary.
Next to Purdue.
Next to.
Second. Any discussion? Hold in favor? Please raise your right hand. You got it, Katie?
Now, I'll make another motion if the board's ready for it, that we, that we go into the upset bid process on the remainder of the property, but that whoever we do business with on this has a limited, a certain amount of time to actually develop, go into development or the properties to be returned to us. And of course, we give them our money back, but.
And in that, there's some, there's some commitment by the developer to say, once I get the permitting, I can be under construction within about six months.
Second.
Two year, two years would be a reasonable amount of time for that.
For, for, I mean, for permitting and everything?
Yeah, for permitting and to begin construction.
It'll take that long.
Yeah, it'll take that long.
But there's gonna be a claw in there if it don't start in two years.
If you don't start in two years, we can ask for our money back. That our option.
I mean, we can ask for the land back.
Start with that.
Not the money.
All those in favor? Please raise your right hand.
Mr. President, you can always come back and ask for an extension. It ain't perfect.
Right, yeah. I hate to.
Thank you. Thank you.
Tell you ladies and gentlemen, we're getting ready to go into closed session, so I'm gonna have to ask you to leave again.
Need a motion to go into closed session?
I need.
Seconds. All in favor? Please raise your right hand. Katie, will you meet us in closed session?
We're getting closed session under SCGS 133-3183, it's all the. Thank you.
Mine or finance?
All right, we ready to go?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of the closed session.
I'll second.
Plural. But the closed session, well, identify the closed session now. This, this is a closed session that has to do with the Leary lawsuit.
As well as.
As the opioid.
Yeah. Okay.
The entire package.
Right.
Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a motion. I move that we release the minutes having to do with the Leary lawsuit to the public.
Any discussion?
Well, I can make a comment if nobody does. Won't take but a second.
Go ahead.
Well, you know, the board, the, the board's led me to believe they don't wanna release these minutes, but what I wanna say to the board is, that, uh, keeping these minutes secret puts more dispersion on you, uh, in keeping them secret. You need to go ahead and release them, because there's really nothing in the minutes that amounts to anything.
And anybody can say that? Sure.
Yeah, I got one thing. I want a commissioner.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want, Mr. Chairman, so when.
One comment.
Yeah. Keep it down to about seven or eight sentences. Just kidding.
Start and win.
Uh, I, I want a member of this august board, when this debacle occurred, and one party sued the other party, one party won, and minutes are there for collected in closed session, need to be dispersed as per hood, and I agree with that. What do we have to lose? It's all in the sake of transparency, and transparency is key to good government. So I, I suggest here, I think this is Sunshine Week, or it was just Sunshine Week, let's release the minutes. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I was a commissioner when three of our citizens filed a suit against the county. I took that as a personal insult, by integrity. I don't know where those citizens got the information from, that something went on hanky panky, deals made in the back room, in closed session. The taxpayers of this county have ended up spending $43,000 plus fighting this, to prove that we were innocent, and that we, we were not guilty. And we agreed not to go after attorney's fees. And I'm voting for them not to be published until the statute says that we have to do that. Call it transparency, sunshine, or whatever. So I will be voting against this.
Anyone else? Time to take a vote. All those in favor? Raise your right hand. All those opposed? You got it, Katie?
Most are adjourned.
Second. It's a good motion.
All those in favor? Raise your right hand.